Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order a regular scheduled city council meeting. Let's go ahead and proceed by having the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Leonard.
Present.
Mayor Potemperi Polpescu.
Present.
Mayor Rigsby and Councilman Daley are absent. There is a quorum.
Yes. As she's mentioned, both gentlemen unfortunately had prior trips arranged because of work-related issues. So it'll be just three of us and a whole lot of folks in the audience. So before we get started, just a general announcement. There's a number of items on the agenda that require public hearings. In order to make sure that we're well organized, if you plan on making any public comments, please submit a slip to the clerk and she'll submit it to me and I'll call you forward. Rather than just asking for people from the audience, we would like for you to tell us ahead of time that you plan on speaking. We did meet in closed session and I'm going to ask our city attorney to see if there's any reportable action.
Thank you. On item C.A., the council met with their legal counsel, received a report, gave direction. There's no final action to report at this time. The matter is listed on the agenda. Item B was a real property matter. Again, the council received a report, gave direction, but no final decision was made regarding that matter regarding the property that's listed in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and begin by having our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Leonard.
I, as father and husband, thank you for your love for us and continuing to watch care and guidance over us. We pray that you will guide us in our decisions here in our discussions as we look to do what's best for our city.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, where nation under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Now we get to public participation. If anyone wishes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, you can come at this time and express your views. Otherwise, if you do want to speak on an item on the agenda, we'll just wait until that item comes up and you can speak at that time. So is there anyone who's willing to speak on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any conflict of interest to be disclosed? And I don't believe they are. So we'll go ahead and move forward with our scheduled and related items. First item is a presentation by Mr. David Rutherford from Omni-Trans pertaining to the SBX safety.
Members of the council, distinguished staff, good evening. I'm Dave Rutherford, Public Relations Manager with the Integrated Project Management Office of Omni-Trans. Two years ago, I was here to give you an update on the construction of the SBX project, which was in its early stages. I am pleased to report to you now that the construction phase of the project is substantially complete and we are entering the operational testing phase and we'll be ready to start passenger service by late April. So I wanted to just go ahead and give you a brief update on what's been going on and where we are now. Okay. So there are three components of the corridor, well, of the construction project. One is vehicle procurement and we completed that mid-last year. I think in June, the final vehicle was purchased from New Flyer and delivered. The second component is the modifications to the vehicle maintenance facility at our main office at Fifth and Medical Center Drive in San Bernardino. That work is 30 percent complete and essentially, we're making modifications to three different locations of the facility. That would be three of our service bays, which need to be lengthened to accommodate a 60-foot-long coach. We also have to extend the lengths of our bus wash and fueling facilities. We have a temporary filling facility in its place while we are making those modifications. The corridor is actually about 97 percent complete, I'm told. Pretty much, the remaining work is relegated to the station platforms and the electrical work. As I said, construction's entering its final stages and we are within budget to this point. And I think the most impressive stat on there is that nearly 400,000 man-hours related to this project and not one time-loss injury accident. So we're very proud of that. Safety is our main priority and as I'll be mentioning to you with our outreach campaign, it continues to be during the operational testing phase. So let's start with the southern terminus at the VA. As you can see, some of the glass panel artwork has been installed. It represents the seals of the various branches of the armed forces, the tribute to our veterans. The artist team that developed this is from Taos, New Mexico. They are Juan and Patricia Navarrete. They also designed the Stars and Stripes Monument that is right adjacent to the station platform at Benton and Barton. The second location in Loma Linda where we have a station, actually, there are two platforms. One is on Prospect on the north side of the street next to Anderson, near the Bank of America. You see that photo on the bottom right, has some Fritt pattern with the Loma Linda University logo. And we have some photos of some of the early days of the medical center on the lower, on the lower center and then up above the station platform across the street on the west side of Anderson Street at the entrance to the medical center. Final location in Loma Linda where we have stations, and these are stations that are in mixed flow traffic, curbside service. We have a 180-space park-and-ride facility just south of Redlands Boulevard on Anderson. There's a structural monument at the entrance to that facility, which has keys on the top, which is reflective of the keys to the city or the gateway to the city. The artist team also incorporated in that some old photos of historic days of Loma Linda's past. And as you can see in the center photo, the station platform is nearly complete and there is an example on the far right of some of the glass panel art. I'm going to skip through most of this because it's not related, but you do need to know that these are the areas where our vehicles will be running in exclusive lanes. This is the pedestrian ramp that leads to the station platform, Hospitality and Tipica New. Most of the work is further along than what you see in the photos. The second location is at Carnegie Drive West in Hospitality near Home Depot and the actual pedestrian ramp is on the other side of the station platform near that intersection. And that's where people will be boarding the rapid transit service. And then the third one is on Hunt's Lane. Well, it's actually on Hospitality at Hunt's Station Platform. You approach it through a pedestrian ramp right at the corner, middle of the intersection at Hunt's Lane and Hospitality. So those are the types of things that we've been working on. E Street, three stations, one at North Mallway. There's a structural monument dedicated to the National Orange Show Event Center. There's glass panel art at the location where our Transit Center is going to be, at Rialto and E, and then at Civic Center at the Court Street Station. We have paver tile as well as another park-and-ride location. E Street is much further along than this photo reflects, at the corner of Baseline. The station is nearly complete. As you can see, there's glass panel art that has been added since this picture was taken at Highland. And then the third park-and-ride location is at Marshall, roughly 100 parking locations, parking spaces. Two stations on Kendall Drive, one at Shandon Hills, the other at Little Mountain Drive. The next-to-last location is at Cal State, San Bernardino. And then the final one, the northern terminus, is at the corner of Kendall and Palm, near the corner of Kendall-Palm, near the 215 off-ramp, the northbound 215. So these are samples of glass panel art in some of the other locations we talked about. Structural monuments and the third type of public art that you'll see at station locations throughout the corridor will be paver and tiles, which will be on the station platforms. Completed several components of the vehicle maintenance facility, including the temporary station, trash compactor, doing pit excavation to extend the length of the service base. And then we are, we've already completed the demolition of the fueling station and we've removed the underground storage tanks. And then the final thing I wanted to just mention to you is, this is a key component of the system because it will offer connectivity, not just to our service, but to Loma Linda as well, because it will connect with other modes of transit as well as other Omni-Trans lines. The San Bernardino Transit Center design and construction is underway and we expect that to be complete by late next year. Sandbag is actually taking the lead on that. But some of the milestones for our project, as I said earlier, we've completed the bus procurement last June. Corridor construction is expected to be completed by the end of this month and the construction of the vehicle maintenance facility should be done by July. We will still be able to operate and the revenue service date is scheduled for April 30th. We will have a completion ceremony probably a week before that. So the final thing I wanted to talk to you about is just the fact that we really take safety as a high priority. And I wanted to just show you a brief video. I don't know. Oh, okay. You know what? I did load it on the bracelets, the USB bracelets that are at your location. Feel free to take a look at them at your leisure. And it's about a minute and 20 seconds long. And it basically goes into some of the things that we want to really bring to the public's attention. The fact that there will be vehicles on the road every day doing the testing, approaching the platforms. We want to make sure that people are paying attention, that they're eating the signs, because there are a bunch of new signs throughout the corridor, and that they stay out of the exclusive lanes in San Bernardino. There are no questions. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I did watch the video myself online and I would encourage everyone to actually watch it. We're all going to be impacted by it because we all travel the same routes. So it's going to be unusual to suddenly see a lane in the middle of the road that you're not allowed to be in. So just pay attention and eventually, everyone's going to acclimate. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to our second item, which will be Council Bill R-014-04, an agreement between Mansfield Oil Company of Gainesville, Georgia, pertaining to subsidy payments to Mansfield subject to satisfaction of conditions contained in the agreement. It's listed under special counsel, but I think Mr. Bolowich will give us a quick update and report on this item.
And thank you, council members. And special counsel will keep me out of trouble on this. About three months ago, the city was approached by Mansfield Oil. They are a national retailer and wholesaler of oil products. They were looking for a new office someplace in Southern California. We met with them, negotiated about relocating their commercial office facility. This will not involve any oil trucks, tanker storage, or any material. They move bulk product from the refinery to the receiver. So there won't be any trucks or any oil activity in the city. This is a commercial office venture. We've discussed with them, this is a 20-year agreement, a revenue-sharing agreement. State Government Code Section 53083 requires that such agreements be properly noticed and available for review as required. This has been noticed, has been available for review on the website, and will remain available for review on the economic development page of the city's website during the life of the agreement. The agreement will make available to the city additional sources of sales tax revenue. It's in the best interest of the city, the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, to promote the public purposes and provisions of what we're trying to accomplish as a community. The agreement is that Mansfield Oil will receive a rebate of 75 percent of their sales tax. The city will retain 25 percent of that estimated, before we get that, environmental impact. This is exempt under SEQA because it is not considered a project per Section 15378B4 of SEQA. It is assumed, or estimated, that the relocation will provide between 10 and 15 full-time positions in the city. The Mansfield Oil has leased offices and corporate business center and is in the process of completing tenant improvements with the operational date within 100 days from today. Estimated that we will have a direct fiscal impact of $442,500 per year in increased sales tax to the general fund. This is money that is available to general fund only, is not available to enterprise funds such as water sewer-connected communities. There is also a potential that a portion of the county tax pool revenue may be increased to an unknown amount. We have executed agreements by Mansfield in hand, so we're ready for the city manager to execute the city's agreement upon your approval. And representatives from Mansfield Oil are here to answer any pertinent questions, should you have them.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and give an opportunity for the gentleman to speak if they choose to. Otherwise, it is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for anyone else who may wish to speak on this item. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll go ahead and have us discuss a little bit about this particular item. Does anyone have any questions? I have a question. Is, how often is this done between cities and other enterprises?
This is, it's not a terribly unusual occurrence. It does happen. The city has one other agreement in place with Anixter right now for that. And especially in the days when redevelopment was very active, it was not unusual for a city to provide incentives to attract a business to that city, whether it's the property tax, sales tax, or some other rebate, or some other incentive, either the rebate or helping them build the building or building a street. And of course, other states are actively involved in sucking businesses out of California like Nevada and Texas by offering those types of rebates.
Go ahead, Mr. Duper.
I just wanted to commend staff for working hard on this project. It's, I know, been a little bit of time and effort on it. And I'll go ahead and make a motion that we move Council Bill R-2014-04 and finalize this agreement.
Second. Before we vote on it, I just wanted to make a general comment that this is a unique opportunity for us. It's very challenging, especially in these times, to be able for cities to generate additional revenue to provide for many of the services that we provide. So it's been especially challenging for Loma Linda because most of our employees belong to nonprofits, so we don't really generate sales tax as a result from their expansion. It's been especially challenging trying to get retail to come into our town because most of the retail is either gone to San Bernardino or Redlands. So we're very fortunate that we were able to work out an agreement that's beneficial to both parties. And clearly, it's something that, it'll allow the city to prosper, but more importantly, allows the company to possibly expand, which gives us the opportunity to have even more employees and generate even more tax dollars to the benefit of everyone else. Anyone else want to comment? With Dusty and Daley not here, our meeting's going to go really quick. They tend to have a lot more to say. I have a motion for Mr. Duper, a second for Mr. Leonard. Go ahead and vote. All in favor, say yea. And I guess, the, under the new rules, we must publicly declare that Council Bill R-2014-04 was approved with yea votes from all members present. Does that satisfy the legal requirement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is, next item is one that many of you are here for, so this might take a little while. This is Council Bill 02014-02, is the first reading and set for a second reading for February the 25th, which is modifying our wastewater rates to reflect the increase in the city of Loma Linda for the operations of the sewer collection system within the city, effective April 1st, 2014. Public Works has a quick update on this item and after that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilman. A little background. Our sewer system consists of two components. First is a collection, a collection system, which is from the pipe that go from the house to the sewer main. The second component is a sewer treatment plant. The sewer treatment plant belongs to the city of San Bernardino, where we have a joint power authority between the city of San Bernardino, city of Loma Linda, and East Valley Water District, which is the water agency that serves Highland, where the three agencies bill and operate, and the city of San Bernardino operate the sewer treatment plant. This portion of the fee study is only for the city of Loma Linda. It's a portion for the money that we use to maintain and operate our sewer collection agency, to maintain the pipeline, manhole, and so forth. The city did a study, a rate study, that presented to the city council at the December 10th city council meeting. And we also include that in the mailing that mail out to the resident. We mailed out a total of 5,100 notices, of which 93 were returned due to undeliverable. And then we received 30 written protests back from the resident. So, and this is, this is the rate study that will be effect for the next five years. So, we have our consultant, the study is here, and be happy to answer any question after the public hearing.
I had a question about that. Since we went through a very lengthy presentation on this in December, and my memory is not clear, but remind me again, what is the actual increase per month?
Yes. For the sewer is, for the fixed cost for sewer, it's a dollar and eight cents per month.
For the residents?
Yes, for the resident rate. Yes.
Okay. I see it. Okay. Alrighty. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do, on this particular item, I only have one slip, and that is Mr. David Gramling. Go ahead and, sir, come on, step forward and...
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to just ask you a few questions here. We'll go over a few things, maybe. You say the rate is going to basically be affected in an amount of about a dollar eight. That's per household?
For the residential, yes.
Now, is that over the four-year term or is that just the first increase?
Pardon me?
Is that over the full term? You know, this thing is on a tier?
No, no. This is, this is from existing today. Right now, the rate for the collection agency is eight dollars and 67 cents. Come, if it approved tonight... Come, if it approved tonight, well, next, the next meeting, it would be come nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And then come January of two thousand and fifteen, it'd be ten dollars and fifty-seven cents. So it's about a dollar.
And so forth. So over the next four-year term, okay?
Yes.
How much increase are we actually looking at?
It's probably a little bit, about five dollars.
And currently, we're paying how much?
Eight, eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for residential.
It actually goes up. I'm looking at the, it actually, yeah, it goes up about seven dollars over the period of five years.
Five years.
So in essence, it doubles.
Correct. It does double.
I got a hundred and eighty-dollar water bill in my hand here.
Yes.
So what am I looking at five years from now? I mean, I send my kids to school here. I send them to universities. They haven't brought back any returns on this education. That's a lot of money for water. I'm paying a hundred and eighty dollars. And this is in the winter. In the summer, I'm paying two forty. That's a lot of money. What's it for?
Okay, I, for, this is for fixing the sewer line, okay? We, for a dollar, okay, if it starts from now, a dollar eight multiplied by five thousand one hundred, which is about, oh, five thousand, which is about number of connection we have in the city, that's five thousand dollars a year. Okay? A month, I'm sorry, five thousand dollar a month. Times twelve, that's sixty thousand dollars a year. When we have to do the sewer repair, the pipe repair, it costs at least two-hundred thousand dollars, three-hundred thousand dollars to repair. And right now, so what happened right now is we actually in deficit in the sewer fund. We can't operate, we can't go out if the sewer leak today, we can't go out. Well, we can, we end up having to borrow money from some other fund to go fix that sewer pipe.
I mean, I see, that's a genuine need. That's.
Yes, yes.
Sewage, water, clean clothes, food, these things have to happen. I understand that.
Yes.
But basically, my rates are gonna double. I see, I have a family. I have to look at this long-term. And over the next four years, I mean, that's quite an increase.
I'd like the city manager to explain how.
No.
How these, how these different funds work and where the monies come from and how monies can't be crossed over from certain funds. There's a sewer fund that revenue comes into. We can't use general fund monies and other monies to make these repairs and do that. It has to, because of legal requirements. Can you go over that, sir?
And again, like I mentioned earlier, this is two component. One, this is for our city collection system. You still have, your bill is, for sewer, it's about fifty-three dollars. Because I live here in town too. So part of it will go to the city of San Bernardino for treating that sewer.
I understand. So you guys are okay with this? I mean, that's still quite an increase. I mean, if they said, okay, in four years from now, I want the Stater Brothers instead of three dollars a loaf, you're gonna pay six. Would you take a second look and say, wait a minute, are we gonna stay with Stater Brothers? You do understand what I'm saying. I mean, you have a family, you have a responsibility.
Yes, sir.
And you have to look at it. You have to look twice. So what I'm asking is, are we sure we wanna go that route? Is there some other way we can possibly go without taking the basic, the most human, basic necessity of life and doubling the price on it? That's a lot. I mean, I appreciate your opportunity for me to stand here and talk to you. I appreciate your indulging me. I really do. But is there any way we can possibly just take a look at any other alternatives?
If the city manager can also report on where we stand compared to surrounding cities and our rates. I believe we discussed that at the last meeting also.
Our rate is lower than our neighbor's city, but.
No, I applaud that. I applaud that, I sincerely do. If you're running in a deficit, okay, and these guys are fifty yards ahead of you, you know you have to catch them, but you have to give yourself some time. You can't just break out all out and then pass out in twenty-five yards. You have to pace yourself. Four years is a short period for a double rate.
Yes, I understand.
Maybe we could have our consultant. A lot of this was explained.
Study for us and.
Go ahead, Clay. Go ahead and approach. We did go through a lengthy explanation, but you can go ahead and summarize for us the reason for the increase, the fact that we haven't increased it for a number of years, and the various other aspects that has automatically forced us to implement this. Thank you.
Specifically for the sewer fund, it's running a deficit mode as Jarb mentioned. Due to some of the budgeting that's gone in past years, we're in a deficit mode, and we have to increase the rates to get out of that deficit mode and get back to a positive balance. So in the meantime, the city's been borrowing money from other funds, so we have to pay that back as well. So we're doing this over a ten-year period, not really quick. Secondly, when Jarb mentions the dollar eight increase, the actual total bill is including San Bernardino treatment plant expense. So the total bill's like twenty-seven dollars. So we're increasing a dollar eight on twenty-seven dollars, not on eight-sixty-five necessarily. So while it looks extreme, it's really not that bad.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have any other?
If I could finish?
Sure, go ahead.
The thing is, this was, this was done with such subtlety. Okay, we did a fifty-one thousand piece mailing, apparently.
Yes.
People that are in this town, I mean, let's, let's, I've been here for years and years and years. They're college kids. Most of them are college kids, so they rent. But the renters have no say, but if I rent my place to somebody, I'm gonna include the water bill in their rent, so the people actually paying the bills have no say about it. This place should be packed. We're talking about doubling our bills, and there's nobody even here. It's just done with a degree of subtlety that I'm not real comfortable with. And now he says it's gonna be a ten-year term. We're at four, and we're already doubled. What's, what, I mean, what are we looking for, six years beyond that? I don't mean to be argumentative, and I do appreciate your indulging me, but I do have questions.
I know it's challenging for people to understand that there's a number of rate increases that the cities go through on a regular basis. A lot of folks don't take the time to actually come in and listen to the presentation explaining all that. Clearly, the expenses that we have incurred has put us in a very uncomfortable situation where, God forbid, something happened to our city where we need to really, a big earthquake, we are gonna run into major issues. So that's what, just for maintenance alone, we're in a deficit. I understand you're stating it's double. It's not quite doubling it. You're going from a dollar a month more, which is twelve dollars a year, to possibly paying about seventy dollars in five years, okay? The increase, not the actual rate that you're paying. We're only raising it by less than ten percent. So.
And that's for the sewage?
Correct, correct. So I know every dollar counts for every person, but in this case, when we look at the citywide benefit, and our goal is to ensure that our cities will plan and maintain, and if we don't keep up with our own maintenance, we're gonna be in a further deficit to the detriment of everyone. And I understand that not everyone can afford the extra dollar a month, but some, most people understand that it is necessary. That is why you probably don't see the floor packed. So having said that, I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, having been here for a little while, I understand how easily things can go downstream, how expensive it is when things have to be replaced.
I remember the flood a couple of years ago, right up here on Lawton, and it just washed down, washed down, washed down. I wondered, how's the city gonna deal with this? Well, now, okay, my question's been answered. It takes money. I can appreciate that. It's just, like I said, it was, it's a bigger dip than it looks like. I mean, if I have to jump off this cliff and you guys say, look, it's five hundred feet to the bottom, but don't tell me it's thirty. Tell me it's five hundred feet to the bottom. I'm gonna, I'm gone either way. I mean, hey, what can you do? But put it on the table. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone submitting a slip for this item. Does anyone else wish to speak? Some people may not necessarily be aware of the fact that they submit a slip, but if you haven't and you still wanna speak on this item, you're more than welcome to. Mr. Kraus?
Extremely important. It's mostly in response to our take note of gentlemen's thoughts.
I'm gonna give you two minutes. I just don't wanna start an argument between staff.
No, sir. I need a half a minute.
Okay.
If I recall, some of the other utilities offer their customers the opportunity to contribute into a fund for citizens that may be less fortunate in the community that's earmarked to help with their utility bills. That may be one way that this city could approach this to make it more palatable for, that's it.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we move Council Bill O dash two-zero-fourteen dash zero two. First reading set for second reading. And can we read by, actually, we don't have to read it, do we?
I'll second it.
Hearing a motion, a second. Does anybody have any other arguments to be made or any commentary on this item?
Yes. Can we do our normal voting with aye, or do we need to go back to the yea?
Whatever you prefer. Alrighty, having seen a motion and a second, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor, say yea. Aye. Thank you. Council Bill zero-two-zero-one-four dash zero two passes unanimously with everyone present voting yes. Moving on to item number four, Council Bill zero-two-zero-one-four dash zero three, first reading for modifying the water rates effective April first through January first, two thousand and eighteen, and repeal ordinance number six-nine-zero. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Again, this is very similar to the sewer study that we did. We did both the sewer and water study. Water is not too bad, but we still, we still need to operate the, maintain our water system. For water system, the city owns a hundred percent of our water system. This means that we have wells. We pump the water from the ground, pump it up through the pipe and up to the reservoir that we have here in town. We, the past ten years, thirteen years, we have been replacing a lot of water line. We have been fixing the valves, replacing water meters. So we have been using a lot of money for the maintenance, for our water system. Similar to the sewer, we mail out the notice to fifty-one hundred resident and owner, of which fifty-three are returned, I mean, ninety-three are returned to the city, and we receive thirty respond to protest the rate increase. For the water, for residential rate, the rate will increase about a dollar and nine cents every two months, which is, that is, that means it's fifty-four cents per month for fixed rate of the water rate, okay? And then, and then the other items is, is the rate based on the water consumption. And with the way we have the water consumption is, is in tier. So if you use the low amount of water, you don't, you don't pay as much. But similar to Edison, the more you use, you go to the second tier and the third tier, you pay more. So the point is, the more you conserve in using water, the less you will pay for your water bill. That's, that's in my report.
Thank you. It is, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. I do have one speaker. And I'll go ahead and let him speak first. I'll make some commentary on this item. And that speaker is Mr. Ryan Sinclair.
Members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a presentation that I. Oh, okay, great. So I'm a professor at Loma Linda University. I teach water quality. I have a PhD in water quality and post-doc in environmental microbiology with the Homeland Security. And I just thought that this is a good opportunity to talk about a few different things to the city council. One is water affordability, a brief analysis I did with that. And the other one is water conservation. So I'll go to the next slide. Oh, the arrow button, okay, great. So what I did when I saw this is I got out my ESRI, my mapping GIS, put my GIS hat on, and looked at the resources that we have at the university to look at median household income in Loma Linda and look at some of the federal and international standards for water affordability. So what I found was that, you know, US EPA, they have, and the UN, they have guidelines on water affordability. It's two percent of the median household income. You also have the, over on the right side here, that's the table. So two percent is actually the California recent assembly bill. And then there's the US EPA, which is two-point-five percent of your median household income, and three percent from the UN. So with the ESRI maps and the GIS maps, I looked at Loma Linda block groups to see which one is the lowest income. And the one that I found is part of the north central neighborhood along the border of Anderson. And the median household income there was twenty-eight, six-eighty-five. And then I was, I also was able to find some data on the average water bill. And what I found from ESRI was it's about three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars a year, so that's something less than thirty dollars a month. So a increase of two percent, I calculated it out to be maximum to an average water bill that they would pay, or two percent of the median household income, that's that number there, is five-hundred-and-seventy-four. So that's much more than the average water bill, so it's not gonna, three-thirty-nine is not gonna creep up to that. So as far as water affordability goes, it's an issue for some people, but I'm, that's why I wanna approach you in saying that water conservation and what the citizens can do in their own homes is more important for us right now. And this is a great opportunity, oh, well, here's a map of the different incomes in Loma Linda. But this is a great opportunity to talk about some water conservation measures. There's some neighboring water districts, the Metropolitan Water District and Eastern Municipal Water District. They have current programs on how to save water in industrial, but then also in household improvements. So this is what I'd like to remind everybody here about, is that you can save a considerable amount of water doing a variety of different things. Low water use appliances, washing machines, dishwashers, also lawns, and converting over to low-flow sprinkler heads or using solid surface or like the city of Loma Linda's done along the, some of the roads with the decomposed granite. Another thing to consider is you can also capture condensation from your air conditioner and use that for irrigation. You can also look into the laundry-to-landscape idea. And so, let me see if I have another slide here. So this is a gray water issue, and with one system of gray water in your house, you're not required to have a permit according to the state guidelines. I'm not sure about the city guidelines. But it's a very simple system. This is a washing machine here. It has a three-way valve on it. So for the times when you wanna send it out to your trees, you can switch the valve over and send out your gray water. So this is just one opportunity. And I think that with the, the water rate increase, the city council should, should move towards also promoting some more water conservation education in the city. Because a lot of people aren't quite sure about these things. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this subject? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll discuss as a council. Councilman Duper and I actually attended recently a, a meeting that talked about water conservation. Our city's in serious, serious, serious problems. This drought, when I got on the council six years ago, I attended a number of meetings, and there were very concern about water then. Fortunately, we had a large snowpack about two, three years ago that kinda negated some of those things. But since then, the drought has gotten significantly worse. I don't wanna scare anybody, but pretty soon, the government is gonna be telling us how much water to use. It's not a matter of, we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna be rationing water. And it sounds really scary, and I think we're complaining about, concerned about one or two-dollar increases. It's gonna go sky-high really, really, really fast. I urge you all to start implementing serious water rationing because it's not gonna resolve anytime soon, and unfortunately, it's only getting worse. And from everything that I've read and seen, it'll be ten times worse than our gas prices. Water is a major, major issue, is critical for everything that we do in the state. And the fact is, since we only pay, like the gentleman said, only two percent of our income towards it, we don't even notice it. We take it for granted. When you start paying, like you pay for gas and becomes a large portion of your daily budget, then you start noticing it. But I think it's really important that we start changing our lifestyles now and attempt to figure out ways to conserve less water because I think that the rate increase that we're doing now is very similar to the sewer. We're doing it because we're in a deficit to deal with some of the maintenance that we have to do. Plus, we're, we ourselves are mandated by the folks we buy water from. This isn't our water. We get it from a water agency. They raise the rates, we raise our rates as a result. But pretty. But pretty soon, that agency is gonna be forced to raise their rates significantly, because they will not have access to water. And then water is gonna go extremely expensive at that point. So, in anticipation of that, I urge everyone to start conserving water. That's my little speech, but I'll go ahead and, does anybody else have any commentary?
Just that, as a city, we've taken a lot of steps towards water conservation. And especially in the last few years, we're replacing a lot of our landscaping, things like that, to try to reduce our overall footprint. And that we are a green town, and we're constantly striving to be more green. So, these are things that are on our radar. Unfortunately, sometimes when these rate increases come up, they're, they are necessary and needed. Nobody likes them. We don't like them. But, you know, they're just, in order to live in the town that we live in with the services that we have, this is what the cost is. So, this is the best town to live in, and I think in Southern California. So, we're all pretty lucky, especially if we're all residents here, so.
I'd like to move approval of Council Bill Number 0-2014-03, first reading, second reading, February 25, modifying water rates effective April 1, 2014 through January 2018, and repealing ordinance Number 690.
I will second that motion.
Having heard first and a second, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say yes. All those opposed, hearing none, it so passes. Council Bill 02014-03 passes unanimously with three affirmative yes votes. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item number five. It's the Council Bill 020140-4. That's first reading, set for second reading for February 25. This is a development code amendment, amending Chapter 17 pertaining to provisions for the regulations related to emergency shelters. Mr. Bolowich, I think you have a quick update on this?
Yes. This is in preparation for the next item, which is the housing element. For approval and acceptance by the state of the proposed housing element, the one requirement that we must have for state approval is that we adopt a, an ordinance allowing emergency shelters within at least one zone to be identified and without any conditional use permit or other discretionary action. So, essentially, it's a permitted use within a zone. An emergency shelter by California Government Code, Section 65583, is, is not a homeless shelter, like we think the soup kitchen or whatever else. What it is, is kind of like inland temporary homes, or someplace that serves as an emergency shelter for a family that needs services and a temporary place to get back on their feet and get the, get back into society. The city has identified the industrial zone, or sorry, commercial manufacturing and institutional zones as the two zones that are appropriate for this. First, the commercial, we looked at the commercial manufacturing zone, because it is a little bit removed from most of the residential. And kinda, there is a, it's small transient population, not as in homeless shopping cart transient people, but as people that are in and out, that don't contribute to a stable neighborhood. And then when we looked at that commercial manufacturing, there really wasn't enough space to be legitimate and provide the area we need for that. So, we looked at the institutional zone as well, with the understanding that people that are in these types of shelters require the services that are probably more available in an institutional environment, close to the hospital, close to the services that can provide that, and then it would be close and within walking distance from that. So, let me make sure I got the environmental piece on that. But as, this is categorically exempt from CEQA, and has no economic impact. So, staff would recommend that you approve this on a first reading and go on to the second reading.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see no notes. Having said that, I'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure?
I will move Council Bill 02014-04, first reading, set for second reading.
Second.
Having heard a motion and a second, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor of Council Bills 02014-04 say yea or yes?
Yea and yes.
Yes. Hearing no, no votes, it so passes. So, Council Bill 0-01404 passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on, plodding along here. Item number six, this is the Housing Element General Plan. Mr. Bolowich, you're standing right there, and you're gonna give us a quick update on this item.
This is, we're putting the General Plan Amendment 13-097. It's a consideration of a negative declaration, a general plan amendment, and an amendment to the General Plan Housing Element for the 2014, 2014 to the 2021 planning period. The state requires, as one of the mandated elements of a general plan, is that we have adopted and approved housing element. The city has not had a state-approved housing element for the last four years. There are some potential repercussions from not having that. We have engaged Pogal Ireland with Diana Gonzalez as their representative to work through the housing element. I don't wanna steal too much of her thunder. But essentially, what we've done, the housing element requires a certain number of low-income, very-low-income, moderate housing for a community based upon the density. And it also requires a certain amount of density in a community. So, what we've managed to do is look at what we have here in the city as far as available spaces. What we've done with the council's work and approval for the projects on Poplar Street to meet our low-income housing needs, and have pretty much addressed those. We have some programmatic issues that we need to address, but we are not looking at any zoning changes or any density changes in the general plan to accept the housing element. A final piece is that we do have a letter from the state that upon council adoption of the housing element, the state will approve it. If we have adoption by tomorrow, we are eligible for an eight-year cycle, which typically, it's a four-year cycle. If we adopt after tomorrow, then we will be back in four years incorporating additional requirements from the state. With that said, Diana has a presentation and is gonna address this much more eloquently than I do.
Am I giving you three minutes?
Is there a presentation? Thank you for your time tonight. As staff indicated, I'm gonna do a small presentation. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. I'm gonna review some of the background on the housing element data, which we reviewed at the study session in the fall. But for the benefit of anyone who wasn't there, I'll review that. We'll talk about the state review of the element and the next step in this process. The housing element, as staff indicated, is one of the chapters of the general plan, and it's the only one that requires state review and approval or certification. It looks at housing need and how the city can address that housing need, and also how the city will address the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, which I'll discuss in a few minutes. The housing element has four major sections. The core of it really is a housing plan, which contains the policies and programs for housing the city will implement, and the other sections feed into that. The needs assessment looks at current housing needs, and the constraints looks at challenges in the city towards housing development. Resources looks at the land resources available to meet the RENA, to meet the housing need. And the housing plan, as I said, has the policies and programs related to housing. Before I show the RENA and talk about how we meet that, I wanna explain quickly that the RENA is not a construction obligation. The city is not obligated to construct any of the units when we discuss, you know, meeting the RENA. The city's obligation is to have appropriate land use policies to meet that regional housing need that it was assigned by the state and by the Southern California Association of Governments. One interesting part of the law that actually is very helpful this round is Assembly Bill 2348, which allows cities to take credit for the lower-income RENA units based on density. So, when I talk about meeting the low-income, very-low, low and moderate-income RENA, again, I'm not saying that the city is, is going to only allow affordable housing on those sites. It's just saying fortunately, we get to take credit for those, and it'll be up to the property owners, developers, and the market to, as to what gets developed in the city. The city's 2014, 2021 RENA was about a little over 1,000 units. Because the city's previous housing element was not certified, the 2008 RENA for the lower income is, rolls over, and you have to meet that. But because of some of the city's actions in terms of approving affordable housing, as staff mentioned on Poplar Street, we were able to, in terms of the 2008 RENA rollover, we were able to reduce that by taking credit for affordable units that were built since 2006. So, the total RENA with the rollover is 1,796 units. And in terms of meeting the RENA, I also wanna be very clear that we're not proposing any changes to land uses or to densities. Fortunately, the city's land use policies that are in place are sufficient to meet the RENA. And when we talk about capacity, how many units we're showing on, can be developed on a site, we're staying well within the parameters established in the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So, in no cases do we say that there'll be, the number of units on a site is more than what's allowed by your current land use policies. And when we talk about, once again, so talk about the affordable RENA, we're talking about higher-density sites, not necessarily sites where affordable housing will be developed. And as you can see by the, this is the site's inventory. And as you can see, in the southern, southwestern side of the city, the largest sites. But they're just large geographically. As you know, these are very low-density areas, so there's very few units that we're counting in that area. The majority of the sites are really in the special planning areas. And it's Planning Area B, which is on the cluster on the west side, the Stripe Cluster, and Planning Area D, which is the cluster on the east side. And we've also identified some scattered vacant sites, and also underutilized sites, which are sites that are developed significantly below what is allowed by existing land use regulations. And with these sites, we are able, even with a little cushion, to meet the RENA for this planning period. Now, the housing plan, which I said is the core of the housing element, we really haven't changed the intent or direction of it. We just kind of refreshed it. For example, we took out programs that were already accomplished. We removed or modified programs where funding has changed. For example, programs that relied on funding from the former RDA. And we also tried to streamline it. We consolidated some of the programs. Your previous housing element had about 40 programs, and this housing element has about 12. And a lot of those programs just have action items, which I think makes it easier to read, to understand, and to implement. And I'm going to review quickly the topics where the, under which the programs are grouped, and the topics which are in the yellow box are established by state law. And so, we have programs related to housing opportunities, or supporting, encouraging development of housing to meet the community's needs, housing to meet the needs of all income levels, which includes affordable housing programs. Removal of government constraints, just talk about some tweaks to your development code to bring it in line with state law. Conserving, preserving, and improving the housing stock are programs aimed at maintaining the high quality of housing in your city. And equal housing opportunity programs address some federal fair housing and housing accessibility laws. During the process, all CEQA requirements were satisfied. And after the study session, we put a draft together, and it was submitted to the state. And we worked with them in the fall, and they had some questions. They had, they asked for some clarifications. Most of it was non-substantive. They wanted us to explain certain things or to add more detail. They did ask us to make a few small changes to the program. For example, they, even though your residential rehab program is no longer available due to loss of funding, they asked us to keep that program in, in the case, in the event that the city found funding for it, it could be reinstated. Just an example of some of the changes they asked for. Let me go back really quick. One other change we made is based on the Planning Commission hearing. Planning Commissioner asked us to add a policy supporting efforts of large employers in the city in their efforts to address their workers' housing needs. So, we added that policy. And of course, now you're familiar with Senate Bill 2. After the HCD review, we did receive a letter of substantial compliance. And once the element is adopted, and the emergency shelter portion of Senate Bill 2 is adopted also, the element can be certified. There's other parts of Senate Bill 2 that have to be implemented during the planning period. But because the way the law was written, the emergency shelters portion is the only one that had an implementation timeline, that's the one that has to be adopted, which was just done. So, we're in good shape. And so, the next step, based on your recommendation, we can, if adopted, we can submit the element to HCD for certification. And if the timeline, the legal timeline is met, which is tomorrow, as staff indicated, the next revision will be in eight years as opposed to four years. And certification is important. It's tied to some state funding. It ensures a complete legally adequate general plan. And it's also, it's because of the unknown. They've been steadily increasing the penalties for non-compliance. So, I can't assure you that it won't be more penalties next time. And that's my presentation, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment on this item? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Seeing no volunteers, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Just a general comment, when I came on the council, this was a big issue. We debated this at length. Even despite all the debates and changes, we still weren't in compliance. So, it's nice to see that we've actually finally achieved that level, and now we're moving forward. It would be nice not to discuss this item now for next eight years, if we're all here by then. Having said that, do I hear a motion?
Just wanna make a quick comment. And I've said for the last four years that whenever I asked, where do we stand in regards to other cities in the state in our housing element? And I've always been told, we're always consistently between 95 and 100% compliant. Now, we're pretty, we are at 100% compliance right now, as it stands, barring any further development. And what I actually think is really funny, and I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm glad we are that city that is compliant, but virtually, there are very, very few cities in this great state of ours that actually do comply with these laws. There are cities that are far worse off, that aren't doing any, anything whatsoever. And I've always said that I believe that the state, in their infinite wisdom, if they were to go after an entity, they would probably go after those people first, considering we're always at 95 to 100%. Again, it is, it is the right thing to do, and I'm glad we're doing it based on Caesar's laws, I mean, the state's laws. So, we will follow them. But again, we do things right here in this city. Most other places don't, and I just have to say that it is kind of frustrating to watch that, so.
Question of clarification, can we just move the items together? There's an A and B, or do we need to vote individually?
Yes, they're related. They require the same vote, so yes, you may.
All right. So, do I hear a motion that we approve the housing element of the general plan, including Council Bill 02014-06?
So, moved.
Second.
And that also included the negative declaration?
Correct. Let the record reflect that it also included adopting negative declaration for this item. Having here a motion and a second, go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor say yea.
Yea.
Hearing no, opposition, the item passes. So, we do have... Hearing no opposition, the item passes, so we do have three affirmative votes, including myself, since I actually didn't say yes. So I am saying yes. Alrighty, I think we've done with the...
Well, and the action was to approve the negative declaration in Council Bill R-2014-06, adopting the housing element of the general plan for 2014 through 2021.
Thank you. So, I should have said that, Mr. Attorney said it for me. I appreciate it. Moving on to item number seven, this is Community Development Block Grant Project Prioritization for Fiscal Year 2014 and 15 Funding Cycle, which includes up to $18,892 for approval of public service projects. I do have a number of slips on this item and I'll take them in the order that I received them. We'll go ahead and, well, before I do so, I won't open a public hearing, let me go ahead and have someone from Community Development give us a quick update on how this process works. Public works, okay, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Every year, the city receives a funding from the county for the CDBG grant. The grant come from the HUD, fund from the federal HUD money that they, they divide among different county and from the county that they divide among a different city. And every year, we get less and less money from, from the county. This year, we received our allocation of $105,592, and of which 15% can be used for public services activities. The county received a total of six requests for this grant funding, total $154,856. But we only can fund total of $18,892. The remaining funding, $86,700, it will be used for replacement of the water line on Curtis Street, which is in the north central neighborhood area. I wish, too bad that gentleman left. Is, we try not to use, even if we have opportunity to use grant money to replace a pipeline, we do so, okay? But, but $86,000 is not enough to do the project, so we have to save this money and combine it for next year and so that we can do the project. And, and we have a couple of the agency are here that, that submit their proposal to use the, for the council review for the public services activity. But being only $18,892, the staff recommend that we fund $10,000 for the Loma Linda City Library and $8,892 for Inland Temporary Home. That, that's in my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask our first speaker, Ms. Ann Leonard, to come speak.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm on the Board of Directors for Family Service Association. We have provided services to low income and homeless families for over 115 years. We offer two major programs, a family support, which helps working families with basic needs and support services. There's a growing class of working poor that struggle to make ends meet. When faced with unexpected expenses such as medical bills or car repairs, they may be forced to choose between paying the rent or buying food. Housing advocacy offers homeless or unstably housed families the opportunity to make life changes toward permanent housing, employment and self-sufficiency. It is a comprehensive, long-term program clients must participate in to continue to be eligible for financial services. It includes counseling, money management, parenting, basic life skills training and educational programs. We also have support services. Additional services include food, clothing, computer lab and classes, budgeting, housing support and holiday programming. The funds are requested for personnel costs to administer these homeless prevention services, rental assistance, utility assistance and motel vouchers. The expenses for the services are funded through other grants and donations. If we look at what happened with Loma Linda Services for 2013, out of the 100, out of the 1,543 families we served in family service, 108 were from Loma Linda. 32 rental assists, eight were homeless to housing and 21,871 housing dollars were distributed for Loma Linda. This does not include the cost of case management, other support services provided like food or money management classes or operational expenses. Our request is $5,000, which is 7% of the total county CDBG request and less than 1% of the 2014 agency budget.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and have the other two speakers speak and then we'll have a little bit more conversation on this item. I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Stan Sewell to come and speak. I think he's representing the library.
Thank you. My name is Stan Sewell. I work at the Loma Linda Branch Libraries, the branch manager. We're located at 25581 Barton Road, the best kept secret in the city. Please come and see us. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and the staff for their support over the past years. And we are asking for CDBG funding. Again, I'd like to thank Councilmember Leonard's wife, who has been a supportive person in our literacy program. The mayor's not here tonight, but we would like to also thank him for being the mayor of Whoville and doing our Dr. Seuss program last year. And also a number of staff who have helped us out over the year, including Jar. Just want to let you know what CDBG funding does for the library. It helps keep us open. Wednesdays is our literacy day. It goes to funding staff and also materials. What the library offers is computers for public use, free of charge, and all of our services are free, before I go into them. We have computer classes each week at Tuesdays for the public. We offer preschool storytime and a craft program for the children. We have a teen program in the afternoons on Wednesdays. We have a book group. People are interested now in online materials, so we have books that they can download and keep through our website. We also have overdrive where they can download books to borrow, as well as movies and music and audiobooks, too. We have online databases where they can access things such as auto repair, learning languages, including English and foreign languages, too. Tuition resources, job search information and homework help. We have special offerings going on. Next month, we'll have the cover-to-cover reading program to encourage kids to read and have families read, where they can earn a free sandwich from In-N-Out. We also have a new program called Let Us Know What You're Looking For. Our budget has improved a little bit and we're able to buy books that people are interested in if they do not see them at the library and we will put it for their use first. We offer free literacy services to those in need, including one-on-one English language tutoring and groups, classes. Well, actually, we're doing single people right now, but we were offering English language programs. We will look to expand that as we get our staff situation improved. We serve probably 400 to 500 people per day and our mission is to provide free literacy services and materials to our patrons and the community members and their family in a non-threatening confidential learning center environment. We have probably 20 people waiting right now to, for literacy services, so we are in need of volunteers. And we serve 103 people this past year through literacy program and computer literacy program. We offer other services such as our homework buddies, where people are, come in and they help children, school-aged, with their homework. We don't do their homework, though. We have literacy materials such as GED books, math books, spelling workbooks. We're updating our collection at this point. We also provide free online assistance for homework help. And in conclusion, the program that the county offers has been providing a viable community service to the city of Loma Linda and we thank you once again for your support.
Thank you. I do have a note from Mr. Jeff Little, representing Inland Temporary Homes.
I will make this quick. We are also a proud recipient of CDBG funds from the city of Loma Linda for quite a while. I wanted to give a quick report. I'm Jeff Little, by the way, CEO of Inland Temporary Homes. Most of you probably already know me. 2013, go over some quick numbers here. We housed 30 families that consisted of 40 adults and 60 children, total of 100 people. And that was in 2013 alone. Let me give you a quick breakdown of the services. We did 1,184 case management, 896 mental health sessions, 373 Learning Express, which is our children's program, 80 units of employment services and 219 life skill classes. Of the 30 families we served in 2013, 16 are actually still in our program, because as you guys know, it's a two-year program. You know, again, the end, it's self-sufficiency. We don't want them going back on the streets. We want them self-sufficient with job income and paying taxes. The 14 that did graduate all moved to permanent housing, unsubsidized. So, great, great numbers from last year and we look to be about the same as far as our projections for this coming year. We requested 15,000, I think, originally, which was roughly just over 2% of our total budget. Total budget for this coming year is 630,000. So, that, that is all that I, that I have.
Thank you. Technically, I, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point and I'll let the council kind of weigh in on some of these issues and hear any thoughts.
This has been pretty much a tradition and standard for us with these two groups for the last several years. I know the city manager took time and looked at all the options and I believe selected these two groups just based on our previous history and need and connection with the city. So, I'm comfortable with staff's work on this and their recommendation. You know, there's only so much that we have to give and we're giving all of it. And I believe staff has a, you know, as far as the split, looking at where their needs are, I believe it's appropriate, so.
Ms. Leonard, do you have any other comments?
Oh, I'd echo what Mr. Duper said. I would wish we had more to give to these things, but I think we do what we can and I think it's a good proposal that staff has put forth.
And one of my recommendations, and I've said this in the past, is this thing, it's amazing how quickly time flies, but it seems like it was just yesterday we were doling out this little money that we do have. It helps us ahead of time if folks who want to apply to be part of the pool, provide us some information ahead of time, so we're going to get a little educated to it. So it gives us an opportunity to kind of mull things over. As much as this is a tradition, I've always been open to the idea of actually helping other institutions, as long as I have enough time to, you know, look at the material and weigh the impact they have within our own community. Obviously, we are, you know, partial to those who are within our city in order to benefit the most members. I do appreciate the other entity. Clearly, they do provide assistance to quite a few people in Loma Linda and we're really appreciative of that. Unfortunately, over the years, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at one point, we were, this block round was under $40,000 range?
A lot more.
Yeah, and it's been cut back tremendously. So as a result, clearly, all nonprofits have been impacted. We've, we've heard that from a number of them. So, I'm afraid that's, it is what it is at this point. I wish we can help more. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I will move it.
I'll second that.
Alrighty. Hearing first and a second, let's go ahead and put it for a vote. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Hearing, no one's opposed. The Community Development Block Round was approved with five affirmative votes to distribute $18,892 for the approved public service projects as stated in the staff report. Thank you. Go ahead and moving on to item number eight. It is a public hearing. We're all very much aware of kind of where we're at. I'll ask Conrad to give us a quick update. Mr. Kraus, I know you have a slip for yourself. I'll ask, did you keep your items limited? I'll tell you that it is my proposal that after we hear this, that we continue this item when the full council's here, so we don't want to go into a very lengthy debate. But go ahead, Mr. Conrad.
We, staff is asking for a continuance. Last meeting, we did talk to you about having a remediation plan in place and doing remediation excuse the date, it's supposed to happen the day after the meeting. The property owner did have a company come out to do some work on the property. However, after taking a look at that, it did not meet staff's expectations as far as what we're looking for specifically on vegetative issues and fire issues. The property owner asked that he, or actually asked to appeal to a fire, what are its called? Fire, Fire Marshal's Appeal Board or Fire Appeal Board, which we will be constituting. In light of the pending appeal on that, we cannot move forward on this appeal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kraus, do you have any further information items?
At the risk of the councilman finding you overly loquacious.
I'm giving you a chance, we'll see.
I just want to, I just want to clarify one thing strictly for purposes of perception. This could look like a technique, it could look like lawyering up or kind of a challenge to, to our respect for and belief in the skills of the fire marshal and the other people involved in inspecting the property. I want to assert that it is none of those. Where we really stand with this issue is that almost all the issues are resolved. Much of the work has been done and we've come down to what is a legitimate, at least in the, certainly in the minds of my client, disagreement about some technical specifics. Because the law, the law does afford great discretion to the city, but one of the ways of balancing that is to assure that not total power is invested in the opinion of any one individual. So he's exercised his right to refer this to a neutral body of fire experts. Following that, there's really nowhere else to go. I think that, I'm seeing this as an opportunity to resolve this without bloodletting, with amicability and with some certainty, that we have some standards about what has to be done. He'll have a chance to express his opinion about that and we move forward. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify what this was not.
Just a minor clarification, you're saying that most of the issues have been resolved with the exception of this?
This is true. There's been kind of a misunderstanding, well, I don't know how deeply I want to go into this.
Everybody has their own opinion about...
Let me, we're, we're down to four, essentially four major issues. The middle structure, palm trees slash piles of vegetation and other dead vegetation and yucca plants and those types of, what we consider to be combustible and hazardous materials on the site.
Staff recommended we continue, did you have a date in mind for continuing to it?
To the, the March meeting, that will give us a chance to put the board together and if we can't get it then, we will continue again. What I'd like to do is make sure that this doesn't get continued and fall off the docket, that we do actually continue down the path.
Sounds like we're progressing. Go ahead, Jar.
Well, I want to make, that's exactly, I want to make sure that you have enough time. I don't want to bring it up in next month meeting and continue again, so how about if we give you to April and, and, this way, we... So, how about if we give you to April and, 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 this way, when we come at that time, you take care of majority of problems and, and.
I see. So, your recommendation is rather than risk having to recontinue it when we arrive in March, give the extra month until April to ensure that when we do have that meeting, that's the final decision.
We can do that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I think everyone on the board kind of heard that discussion. Any further comments from anyone? Nobody wants to say anything. Okay, fine. Do I hear a motion that we continue this item until the April meeting?
So moved.
And I think we want to have the exact day.
Yes.
Just April's, April twenty-sixth.
Okay. So, that's a motion to continue until April the eighth.
Moved.
I just had a point of clarification. At that point, will we recommend to go to this board that we're looking at creating, or will, will go to this board before that?
Before the board before that.
Yes.
Correct. You will not recommend to the board. The board will.
Recommend us.
Either, yeah, either uphold or reverse the claim.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we do have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. So, item number eight, which is an appeal to the Planning Commission, has been continued to the April eighth meeting. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight point one, which is in relationship to this item in appointing a Board of Appeals. We're gonna have someone from the Fire Department give us a good, a quick update on what it takes to appoint these gentlemen. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I've presented for you, or provided for you, a little packet that I'd like to go through quickly if I could, for your pleasure, and then answer any questions you have. Basically, on the first page, you'll see that just this week I've got confirmation on the Board of Appeals. For the record, I'd like to name their names and their professions, and it'll make sense as I go through each one, as I, as I go through this packet, what guidelines I followed to put this board together. Number one, design professional, Mr. Jay Nelson. He's an architect. Member number two, a fire prevention engineer professional, it's Mr. Lou Ornell. He's a fire sprinkler contractor. Number three, an industrial safety professional, it's Mr. Chris Kana. He's a fire safety alarm professional. Number four, a general contractor, Mr. Fred Simontal. He's a licensed general contractor. And number five, a member of the board comes from the general industry or business representative. His name is Mr. Bert Clark, and he's a business owner. I arrived at these, at these, at this board, and the names on this board, following the guidelines set forth on page two, on Board of Appeals. The Fire Code directs me on how to assemble the Board of Appeals, and you can see I've followed right along there, getting, getting a member of the board from each one of these different disciplines. As I said, we just, I just was able to finish putting that together this week. Many of the gentlemen had too short of a notice to be able to be here this evening, so I hope just their names and their professions is adequate for this evening. They will follow the, the guidelines. When we get them assembled, they'll follow the guidelines that the Board of Appeals, Fire Code tells me to follow, and it'll be set up that way. Second in, in, in here is a, is a few, few pages that I just wanted to put in this packet to remind, if I could, the, the council that this is essentially an appeal of an appeal. We have once, as you know, we're, we're here because of the Appeal Board that was set, put together in the form of the Planning Commission, and in that, we followed the guidelines set forth in a adopted, adopted reference in our municipal code on the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. Followed that, Board of Appeals, how to set that up from best book, and during that appeals, real quickly, we went over the entire project and the entire process that we've been gone through, had gone through to that point, on everything from the dilapidated structures to fire hazards to code violations on amount of, we'll say, stuff on the property. Also, from that Uniform Code, I've included in the back the definition or the, what we followed in determining dangerous buildings. And the code itself says that, as you get into section three oh two, dangerous buildings, it says if any building that you inspect has any or all of these eighteen situations, that building is deemed a dangerous building. Now, as you can see, I've highlighted, I believe it's six, fifteen or sixteen of those eighteen different classifications that would, would call it a, a dangerous, unsafe structure that we took from the adopted reference material out of the municipal code. So, I just want to remind us all that this is an appeal of an appeal process. We will, I'm fine with waiting until April. This board that we put together, we will, we'll get a timeframe put together, that they can all get together. They're all hardworking folks. Get them put together that Mr. Kraus and I can present our findings, and then they will give you their, their, their opinions and their, what they, what they suggest we do.
Okay. I have a question for clarification. Is he appealing only one decision or a number of decisions?
I'm sorry.
Is he appealing one decision that you've?
The, the appeal for me now, essentially, and why, when the request came from Mr. Kraus and Mr. Lubinski to have yet another appeals board, Mr. Kraus presented that in fact, correct, in the Fire Code, there is an option for appeals process relating to fire issues.
Okay.
I only bring up the original, and this is an appeal of an appeal, because we went through the entire process with that, with that appeal board that was set up previously. So, in answer to your question, currently, the areas that we still have concerns over are vegetation issues. I, I wrote up five issues on my part of the inspection.
Okay.
One of them was one of the dilapidated structures. Then I believe there's, number two was the palm fronds, dead palm, palm fronds that are from the very crown of the palm tree to the ground. Three, I believe, was yucca, dead yucca stalks that are currently, as I've driven by, Mr. Lubinski has braced them, if you will, with, I believe it was bamboo, but they are dead and, and during the time of initial inspection, were actually laying on the, albeit the lower utility lines, maybe telephone and, and maybe data type lines. They weren't up in the high voltage, but nevertheless, over the right way, the right of where citizens walk down in front of his property on the side, and, and laying on those, on those wires. That's three. Four, I believe, was standing, dead, standing trees that, in all fairness, Mr. Lubinski wishes to use those as arbors. My contention on those is fine.
That's fine. I, I, it wasn't important for me to hear the individual items. What I, the only reason I was asking is because whatever decision this appeal board that we're gonna be putting together makes, I'm just hoping that they'll present to us the exact items and how they went about reaching the conclusion it reached. My only comment or concern, just from seeing what I've seen, is that everyone on that list has everything to do with building, but I'm not sure how many of them have anything to do with vegetation. So, I'm not sure how they're gonna go about reaching their conclusion that's contrary, but I guess you guys will let us know what they decided to do and why.
Well, I followed, in, in answer to that, I, I followed, okay, I, I got the request, put together another appeals board. I have to draw from, from people that, that I work with, that.
And that's true. Also, the stuff you deal with needs to do with structures usually, or?
Well, I just wanted to point out, though, that I went to, I went to the Fire Code, and the Fire Code said, here's your appeals board.
Okay.
And it does, it's not specific. So, there is an appendix to that, as I've given you in, in your packet, that in the back is the appendix of, this is how you design your appeals board.
Okay.
Design professional.
Well, I think any reasonable person can decide just based on the evidence as to whether something constitutes a weed versus not a weed, so I guess we'll hear back from you folks as to what your decisions are. Mr. Duper, you had a comment?
Just my question was, and all five of these are willing to serve?
Yes, sir.
And you, they're all contacted? So, these are people you've already talked to, and they're all good?
Yes, sir. I got the final confirmation on Monday from the fifth, fifth individual that he'd, he'd like to serve on the board.
Mr. Leonard?
So, my understanding is this is being put together to be used for this situation, but will it remain as a committee that can be used for future situations?
Yes, sir. They, they are, they are deemed to be on a board for up to five years. I think the way they, they spell it out is two of them are required to commit for, I think it's one year. Two of them are commit for two years. One commits for three, and ultimately, they could be, continue for up to five years on that board.
And one more question. I understand that these people all represent certain disciplines that you need. How'd you decide on those specific people?
Well, I chose, in each one of those disciplines, I had two, minimum of two, people that I, that I have worked with on every of the projects that are the architects or the, the corporations that do the sprinklers or whatever. And to be honest with you, I look at it like, well, I got, I gotta choose. So, I called them, who was willing, first of all, to do it, and then, to be quite honest with you, I don't want people to think, well, this fire marshal hand chose somebody. It was very difficult for me to say, so as I called each one of these guys, I said, look, I've been, I've been tasked with putting together an appeals board on a particular property. I'm not, I don't want to give you any more information about that. All I can do is to tell you that what will, if you're willing to do this, there'll be a, a resident and his attorney who will give you what they believe, why they don't have to heed the notices that we provided. I will give you my version of why I feel the property is a fire hazard or the buildings are a structure fire hazard, and then it's up to you folks to decide. And that's how I chose them.
How will future vacancies be handled, then? Do we, just the same way? This is, the names are brought to us and we're put on, or does it go through the other process we use wherein people apply and?
Actually, the, the code reads that, that myself chooses them.
Okay.
And then you folks approve them.
Okay. So, that's different from our, the way we do our other committees, then, yeah.
Out of curiosity, since I don't, I might recognize one name in here, but do any of them actually live in Loma Linda?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. Don't know. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Kraus, did you wanted a comment? Sure. Go ahead. That's fine.
It's in order, yes.
Sure.
The most important factor I want to mention is that Appendix A, which Fire Marshal Gray has used as his template for convening this board, is not mandatory on the city, and it was not adopted by the city. That goes to your question of if the represented disciplines are really the most appropriate to look at what are the remaining issues. I would deem that they are for the building, but for the other vegetation issues, it would be hoped that we'd get people with particular expertise on, on vegetation, on alternate fire management strategies, and on the combustibility of different plants in different situations. So, I'm just, I'm, I share your concern that it may not be optimum in that regard.
And?
But, just to mention.
I would just say, I kind of beg to differ. I believe a layman can tell you what's dry grass and what's flammable, and we all know. And if you've ever seen a palm tree go up, it's like a Roman candle. I mean, it's very intense. You don't want dry palm trees anywhere near your property, I guarantee you.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go as far as to actually figure out exactly what the situation is. I could only tell you that regardless of what the appeal board does, it still ends up being a decision that we end up making. So, we all can agree that we're not vegetation experts, and yet we are gonna make a decision on this item. So, one way or another, we're gonna be, be given evidence by a number of people, including yourself and everyone else, and come to a, a conclusion as to whether we've done everything possible to resolve the issue or whether, you know, we all reached the same conclusion. So, I understand your concern. I only stated it because I know that some of the issues involve vegetation. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process, and I think Mr. Gray specifically pointed out that it's, he followed the, the guidelines. The guidelines doesn't say you need to put a board together that identifies a specific issue, so I, I'm satisfied with that.
No, agreed. It does not. I'm just, it is, it is one recommended template, and it is the, actually, the governing body that appoints this board, so if it is through your representative, that certainly qualifies. But, the intention, though, of having people with particular expertise in fire and fire spread and fire prevention, I mean, we have that in the form of the fire marshal. There, there's no question of his credentials. The intention behind this appeal is that, is to really vet the fact that the technical factors of the conditions on the property, alternative management, the spread, there's a number of issues, and they are technical in nature, would be best addressed by having people with the most specific fire knowledge that we can get.
Mr. Kraus? I actually believe that's incumbent on you. Your, your job is to bring in those experts, and his job is to answer that, and the independent bodies should actually have very little working knowledge. They should be able to be swayed by either you or the fire marshal based on what you present. So, instead of us drumming up the expert to go out there and analyze that property, I think you should hire the expert to come in and defend your position.
Well, I understand that point. I'm referring to the language in the Fire Code that specifically cites that the intention is to have people with particular expertise in matters of fire.
Okay.
That doesn't negate of what you're saying. Of course, it's our duty to present the best argument we can. Why, there's another way to look at the situation.
First, staff clarification to, for council. This appeals board, although it's being convened to, it's being triggered by this particular complaint, this is a board that will hear and sit.
That's true.
For any, any appeals on any project across the spectrum, and we do have some fairly large projects in the pipe that may or may not have, you know, generate appeals. So, we, we may or may not want to constitute this board for this issue. We want to constitute a board kind of one size fits all.
Future issues, yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think, having heard from all parties involved, this is not a public hearing. Do I hear a motion that we establish a Board of Appeals pursuant to section A one oh one of the Fire Code Appendix A and appoint to five members as designated in our staff report?
And Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
The Fire Code does provide that on the initial appointments, that the term be staggered.
Okay.
And so, I would recommend that two be appointed for one year, two for two years, and one for a three-year term. And, again, since the city has not adopted its own procedures for such appeals, the procedures set forth in the Fire Code are those that we would follow.
You're following, correct.
Even though they are not mandatory, they are the only procedures that we have available at this time.
Mr. Gray, did the gentleman that you listed indicate who wanted to serve for how much or who, what they wanted to do?
No, they haven't yet. As I said, as of Monday, is when I finally got the final word that I had all five.
So, we're just gonna do it ourselves? Identify who we think should be for two years?
Just go down the line.
Yeah.
First year, one year, next year, two, three years.
Yeah. That, that's fine with me, so.
You don't owe any of these people.
Okay. So, I guess, let the record reflect that we're gonna go ahead, and as part of the motion, that's gonna be said that Mr. Nelson and Mr. Ornell are gonna be for one year. Mr. Kana and Mr. Simontal will be for two years, and lucky Mr. Clark is gonna be there for three years. Alrighty. Having said that, do I hear a motion that we establish Board of Appeals?
I move that.
I'll second.
Hearing a first and a second, we'll set up for a vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Hearing no, opposition is so passes, so we have approved the establishment of a Board of Appeals pursuant to section A one oh one with five affirmative yes of all those present. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine. This is a public hearing, which we'll be open in a second. Mr. Bolowich, I think it's just a self-explanatory, but go ahead and give us a quick, it looks like someone else from Community Development is gonna give us a quick update.
I'm tired of talking. Mr. Ariola is gonna.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Counsel. Chancellor of Healthcare is requesting a, a time extension. It is for one year, however, they just had their final map approved in December, and they just, they're ready to pull permits. The plans have been approved by the Building Department, and they've been approved by the Fire Department as well. And this is their second request for an extension, but they've been moving very quickly this last, these last couple of months, and they think that those. these last couple of months, and they think that they'll be beginning in March.
Which means that by the time this appeal exhausts itself, the building will be finished?
We hope so, sir.
Alrighty, very good, thank you. Do I hear a motion that, oh, this is a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing, they're dropping like flies, very few people left, however, if you wanted to speak, you should have returned a slip, but you still have an opportunity to speak, and here it is, nobody's standing up, so therefore I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we move forward to looking for a motion on this item, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing a first and a second, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, so, we have granted a time extension for precise plan and design 110-9 for the expansion of the 83-bed skilled nursing facility for one more year, thank you. You're looking at me like there's...
Unanimous.
It was unanimous, thank you. Alrighty, moving on to the consent calendar, hopefully you all had a chance to look at it, are there any items that you want to pull or ask any further questions? Hearing none, I do have a quick question on item number 18, we are, what is the actual amount that we're actually asking to revise it to?
Eighteen, twenty-five thousand, not...
So it is gonna be up to twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
And, explain to me just real briefly, why is it that we're having to do this again?
Yes, because this is for survey, we, we have a lot, if it turn out, there's a lot of survey work involved, the project is coming right along, we completed installation of the storm drain system, so the, the remaining work will be, will be for the, the remaining of street improvement, put in the curb, gutter and sidewalk, traffic signal, and, and so requires some additional survey work.
I see, so, okay, so the survey is related to the next phase...
Yeah, construction staking, I'm sorry.
I see.
It's construction staking, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
On item number 16, just to comment, if you would note that the new agreement on that with the Phoenix Group should be approved, subject to final review and approval of the city attorney, since I just received that.
Okay, sounds good, so we'll go ahead and approve it, but ultimately you need to review it before we move forward with it. Thank you for that clarification. Hearing no, further questions on the consent calendar, do I hear a motion that we pass the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
I'll second with that caveat that item number 16 has to be reviewed by the city attorney.
Having, here the first and a second, all those in flavor, flavor, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing not, none opposed, so the consent calendar was approved unanimously by all those present, thank you. And, moving right along, we go up to item number 19, old business council bill 02014-01, this was the second reading from this item that was approved at the last council meeting, development code amendment, DCA 13-114.
I'd actually like to make a motion that we continue this particular item to the next council meeting, so that we can have the entire council here.
Do I hear a second for that?
I think that's an important enough one that we should have as many of the councils possible, so I would second that.
Okay. Hearing a first and a second to move the item to the next council meeting on February the 25th, or, yes, on 25th, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, so item number, council bill 02014-01 has been continued to February 25th, and it was voted unanimously that we continue the item. Alrighty, this leads us to almost the end, we have reports of councilmen, does anybody wants to say anything about any item? Hearing none, any reports of officers?
No.
No officer reports, so we are now adjourned to our next council meeting on February the 25th, and we're gonna go ahead and go right into our successor agency redevelopment, successor agency, agency I guess it is, and we'll go ahead and start call to order, roll call, that's already been taken care of, any items to add or to be deleted?
No, sir.
This is not an opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on items in the successor agency to participate, seeing none, moving forward, there's no conflict of interest. We have the consent calendar, which is made up of our demands registered and minutes from the January 14 meeting, do I hear a motion?
Someone...
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, consent calendar has been approved unanimously, we now adjourned the successor agency, and we opened the housing agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any oral participation from anybody in the audience on any items related to the housing agency, seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the consent calendar, which is made up of our demands registered and minutes from the January 14 meeting, do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
The consent calendar has been approved with three affirmative votes, and I believe that leads us, oh, do we have any chair member reports? Seeing none, any reports from officers, hearing none, we are adjourned until February 25th, thank you. And if Dusty was here, this would've taken another hour and a half.
Wow.